I'd like to call a meeting of the Willetts City Council to order for March 11th. We have, oh, let's stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, let's do roll call.
Yes.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Madrigal.
Here.
I am here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Our first item of business this evening is I was handed, staff would like to amend the agenda to include an item from the Public Works Department, I think you've all seen this probably, but adopt a resolution accepting the construction completion of the Water Treatment Plan Improvements Project Contract 2012-02 and authorize the filing of notice of completion. This is something that came up subsequent to the agenda and we need to deal with it in a timely manner. So, we need to, in order for us to consider this item, needs to pass by a four-fifth vote.
I'll move that we add it to the agenda.
A second. Any of the public that like to address this item rather being added to the agenda? Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Strong.
Yes.
Madrigal.
Here.
Orin Stine.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes, so we'll deal with that under the Public Works section of the deal. So, we're going to take one little item out of order because I believe we do have a special introduction to do this evening, but slight delayed, so I want to go to, well, let's see. First of all, let's do Public Communications. I'm too anxious to get out of here tonight. Council welcomes participation in its meetings. Thomas be limited to three minutes on items that are not on the agenda this evening. Do we have anybody that like to address the council on items not on the agenda? I see several, so please step up to the podium and introduce yourself and let us...
Good evening, long time no see. Been kind of busy rubbing nickels together down in the coffee shop, but we came down to have a word with you. My name is Tom Mann and came down to have a word with you about the Alley project that we've been talking about on and off. Last time we dropped a package off was a while ago, so we just wanted to let you know that we're still ready to go to work on that and our offer of figuring out how to fund and build the arch is still on the table and we're just anxious to go on that part of the project. If you could help us get in queue to get whatever we need to do to make sure that we actually build it on city property and everything's okay and kind of, and a little blessing from you guys, we'll go dig up the money and get it built. So, we just wanted to throw it out there and let you know that we want to show the town the love and get it done, so.
So, you're ready to move on the arts part of the project?
We need to get the funding and we'll self-fund and we wanted to start the funding process. We have mostly pro bono material together and we have, Garfield Construction has offered and put in a lot of time on this project and we figured that he'll be the guy. He's a very talented builder and we have a budget and we have mechanisms and we have the will, so we're kind of ready to start.
Okay, we'll get together with the Public Works Engineering Department and find out.
And I just wanted to add, I mentioned to Tom earlier that we're going through our goal setting, things that we want to make sure in the budget and that this might be a worthwhile thing to include in that discussion.
It'd be hard to beat pickleball.
Well, we're used to going.
All right, thank you. Pete, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I just want to add to it and that is that Dave Victor...
Pete Swanton.
Pete Swanton, yes. Dave is definitely, he's anxious, he's hitting us up again, hey, do you guys want to do this? If so, I'm really anxious, I would love to do that project. He does come with a, an engineer, his own, and you know, so that we don't have to worry about it falling on people. He's done projects with other cities and he's, you know, really on the up with that. He's a real pro, this guy's for real. If anybody knows his business and anything about his business. So, yeah, that's, and it just, you know, I don't know if we need to get on the agenda to see if there's an interest amongst the city council to see this happen, you know, because we certainly don't want to start until, the funding, until we know that we've, you know, this, we feel that we've got support of the city council. You know, we just feel like this, starting with the arch is a good step to really getting the project, making, giving it some validity, giving it, making it a reality, though we can't do everything right now, you know, this is a good jumpstart to get the project going, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
If I could just comment briefly. So, we have reported at the last Main Street Ahoc Committee meeting that the grant application for the Alley, downtown Alley system, we've not yet heard back on. I don't think we expect to hear back until next month or maybe May. You know, the big Caltrans grant, we're hoping to hear back from, on this month. So, we haven't heard yet on that grant application. We feel very optimistic that it will get awarded and as soon as we hear that, we will then in turn contact PG&E about the undergrounding program and get an application in their, in their queue for that. And so, I think one of the necessary next steps is to get the property line shot by a surveyor. And I know that our staff has been, you know, a little bit otherwise occupied as of late, but maybe we can figure out a way to find some resource to make that happen.
Okay, yeah, you know, I can't say, I can certainly put it out there to different, you know, people and say, hey, you know, here's a great project, if you believe me, would you be willing to shoot the lines for us? Hopefully, we get one, yes, and then we can move forward with it, but I, we don't know if that's going to happen. So, then, at which point, it would come back on the city, so.
What did you have?
Yeah, I mean, I know...
We've got to keep this pretty limited, this is an agendized item, but we're...
Yeah, because of that, we can't really discuss this, but the last time we had a real discussion that was agendized, you made the presentation and, as I recall, the council pretty much liked everything you brought, but it was still kind of conceptual. And what I'm concerned about is that before something is actually built, I'm thinking about, you know, the arch, the size of it, the style, and everything else, it seems like there should be some kind of a, you know, final public meeting on that because I want to make sure that it's not a project that sort of goes off by itself without, let's call it a holistic oversight.
Thank you. I'm going to cut it off there. Does anybody else have anything that they, I'm not trying to cut it off, but we don't have this as an agendized item.
Yes.
There's a little response from that. I'd certainly look to our Public Works Department and the TAC is something that's going to have to go through a review of that, so.
Okay, so I understand, we have, right, we've gone through most of the, well...
Sounds like we're done talking about it, so that's fine. Thank you, Bruce, and we'll talk to Adrian Pira, how to get in touch with the TAC people and see if we can move it and what, having it agendized, if we need a little more discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Hello.
Evening.
Evening. My name is Ian Fitzpatrick and I'm here today, this evening, on behalf of Wowzer to invite you to an event that we're hosting on the first day of spring, Saturday, March 21st, from noon to 1:00 inside the Willetts High School Auditorium. And at the event, it is meant to celebrate the breakthroughs that came from the recent local economic summit that we hosted on February 19th. And at this event, we will unveil plans for creating revenue along with a sustainable business strategy, which includes the creation of local jobs. And the event is open to the public and today I'd like to be able to invite the council, our city staff and the community to join us, to learn how they can become involved. And the, during the recent summit, we brought together a group of local entrepreneurs, local business people and educators to discuss opportunities to spur local economic growth. And the summit, combined with numerous tours of the facility for community members, the open houses that we've had, along with feedback that we received from the 95490 Town Hall meeting, we've, we've been able to assess the feedback and together with a consultant, we've developed a plan. And we want to share that with the community. The recently formed Office of the Chief Executive at Wowzer, or the OCE, consists of Roger Wilson, Cindy Logan, and myself, and we're at this point guiding the organization through this phase. But the 20,000 square foot facility offers a range of tools, workshops, and resources for innovators, entrepreneurs, and artists for a place to work. In addition, we're now doing custom work for hire. We're also opening a cafe inside the facility, it's a members-only cafe called Espresso Yourself, and we've expanded the hours of operation from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. And right now, we're actually currently vetting a list of potential products that we can manufacture locally and sell, so, to create revenue. So, at this point, we're standing on top of our current ladder and we've grabbed a hold of the next ladder and we'd like to invite the community to come join us on the 21st. So, please be in your seat and ready to join us prior to noon on the 21st.
Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in, under Public Communications? I'm going to move on to the public matters then, and I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Ms. Mendocino, Cheyenne DeMarco, to come up and thank you for coming down and seeing us this evening and congratulations on...
Thank you.
Keeping, keeping the crown in Willets.
Yeah.
We're really proud of that.
I was hoping that it wouldn't be bad luck, Cassie, having it last year, and another Willetts girl having it this year, but we're maintaining it, so.
Yes, a dynasty.
Yep. All right. Hey, everyone, if you don't know who I am, my name is Cheyenne DeMarco and I was recently crowned your new Ms. Mendocino 2015, just about a little over a month ago, so, I'm still kind of a newbie, but I'm enjoying it and I really like it so far. And basically, I'm just here to kind of discuss my plans for the year. I really don't have a whole lot planned so far, I'm still kind of waiting for people to approach me and just ask me to appear at events because it's kind of just what I do. And so, basically, within the past month, I, since I was crowned, I've been attending other North California pageants, just like the one that we have here in Mendocino. I went to the Miss Napa Pageant and I watched a new girl get crowned there, and I went to the Miss Sonoma County Pageant, which Miss California was at, and that was pretty cool, I got to meet her. And basically, we just kind of go there, other title holders and I from other counties, and we just watch the pageant and congratulate whatever girl we get to see in Fresno at Miss California this summer. So, so far, on my, my little handy-dandy planner, I have, my first event, I have Miss California Orientation, which is in Fresno, and that's April 10th through like the 15th, it's about a week long. And basically, what we do there is we go to meet our competition, we meet our roomies, and we kind of just practice our walks and our interview skills and our talents and all that good stuff. And on May 25th, we have the Memorial Day Parade, which is in Ukiah, and I'm going there to, first I have to write a poem and then I'm going to recite it, so that should be cool. And, let's see, I have the Flag Day Ceremony, which is in, on the 14th of June, so I believe that's held here, not in Ukiah. I'm pretty sure, I'm not sure. But that is really all I have planned so far, and then all the Frontier Day stuff, and that's really fun. I get a ride in a car and wave during the parade, so that's what I'm looking for to the best. Got to get my wave down.
Yes. I think you got the work, you got, you got to go on there.
Yeah. That's really all I have so far, there'll be plenty more, but for right now.
We look forward to seeing you at many events, and I'm sure you will be going to Fort Bragg and Ukiah and other parts of the county to fulfill those duties as well, but we're really, really quite pleased that you won and that Willetts is being represented again in Miss California Pageant and the rest, so thank you very much for coming and visiting us.
No problem. Thank you.
When you're ready to leave for Atlantic City for the Miss America Pageant, we should talk because I can...
Okay.
You know where the good burgers are.
I know where the good burgers are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, on to the more mundane matters, about an update on the Willetts' emergency water supply project. Rod, do you have an update on that for us?
Well, you know, we have the Foundation Slab Board, we moved the filters over to the slab last week and we're plumbing them up yesterday and today, and the building will go up starting next Monday and should take about three weeks. We did receive our 401 permit, so we have both our permits for replacement of the Elias Well. Tom and Andrea went out and checked it out late last week and it's still going to take, going to take a little while for it to dry out enough for us to get a drill rig out there, but Garmin did their last pressure test today and everything passed and we're just, it's moving along, we should be finished without some unforeseen delay by our July 31st deadline, so.
Very good.
Everything looks, looks pretty good.
Good. Do we have any questions up here on the, on this project? Do we have any question, community, on the emergency water supply project? Very good, thank you, Rod. Move to the consent calendar, I just see that we have minutes under the consent calendar. Do we have a motion or...
I'll move we approve the minutes.
Checking it.
Do we have any comments from the public on the minutes? Any corrections or additions?
I have a very minor typo that I'll just...
Thank you.
Yeah, this isn't English class. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Strong.
Yes.
Madrigal.
Yes.
Orin Stine.
Yes.
Mayor Burton.
Yes. There are a number of informational reports if you care to look at them on your own time. Right to Appeal, persons are dissatisfied with the decision, city council may have a right to review that decision by court. Cities adopted 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to 90 days the time within which decisions of city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. So, let's move on to city managers' reports, just some verbal reports.
Okay. Let's see, just a few things. Yesterday, Susan and I attended, was yesterday, right? A, about a four-hour-long REMF Special Board Meeting to discuss REMF as a group becoming a self-funded insurance plan. And it was pretty intensive, there was no action taken yesterday, it was really for the purpose of reviewing some pretty comprehensive information and then bringing it back at the next board meeting for board action to get that implementation underway. There are, there are just so many aspects of this and there will be an implementation team with our insurance brokers that will manage this process if it in fact gets approved. But the result for the actual member, so all of the individuals that are, you know, participants in the plan, would not, there would not be much difference, or this is intended to be a cost savings over, you know, the years, but it would still be with Anthem, Blue Pross, and still have very similar plan components in it that we do at this point. So, if that does get approved, there will be information forthcoming as we go along the next few months. Let's see, Friday, there's going to be an Economic Outlook Meeting that's, is Mendocino County Agriculture and Business Coalition, and that's a partnership with the Farm Bureau, the Employers Council, North Coast Builders Exchange, and the North Bay Association of Realtors. I reserved two spots on that, but I let them know that I wasn't really sure who would be able to attend. You know, we all know that our schedule these days is sort of in flux, so I wanted to find out, it looks like Friday might be a conducive day for staff and/or council members to attend.
What time is it?
This is 2:30 to 4:00 p.m. in Ukiah at the Space Theater.
I had RSVP'd separately to them to go to that.
Okay.
Appears as if I might be a little bit late, but I'm going to try to make it to what I can.
I'm out of town. I did speak with that group a month or so ago.
This Friday?
Yeah.
I'm out of town.
And Madge, if you have an interest, just let me know. Like I said, I did reserve two spots for that. I will be having a meeting next week along with Rod and Alan Filary with the MCOP folks to discuss the Rails to Trails grant application that we are aiming to submit by the end of May. And that would be for the, along Redwood Avenue, and we're told we would be able to include drainage issues in that grant application.
Can I ask a quick question? This is sort of semantics, but is it Rails with Trails? Like not, not planning on taking any Rails out, but using their property? Or is it two trails, as in changing it over?
Yeah. And the program is actually called Rails to Trails and it's a national program.
Okay.
Then, next Friday on March 20th, I'll be attending the Redwood Empire Division of the League of California Cities Meeting, which is quarterly, and I think you're signed up to go to that as well. That will be in Claverdale and the topic is going to be the bringing in Michael Coleman, I think it is, who's a big municipal finance guru.
Michael Coleman, too, no?
No, Michael Coleman. Michael Coleman is for us with the, for the league, and he, along with Bill Statler, Mike Moltari, the two consultants we had up here last week, and Ken Hampian wrote a book a few years ago about municipal finance in California.
Short book.
It's a very good book. Let's see, last week, last Monday, the 2nd, we had our, part one of our budget planning workshop here in council chambers, and we had a community participation component where the community had some small table discussions and vetted their own priorities for the community. Yesterday, or Monday, Monday evening, I sent all of you your homework that had those results as well as some other background information so that you could individually come up with your list of priorities, and then when we meet on Saturday, the 28th, that's when you guys will do your ranking of those priorities. And that workshop will be at the Arts Center at 9 o'clock, 9 until noon. And then on the same day, at 12:30, we will have the public hearing for the Reach Project, to, the public hearing on the initial study.
I believe you said that if members of the public were not able to make that, but there is something that they care about and would like to be included, that they could pick up comment forms at City Hall, is that right?
Yes.
And have those backed to you by the 16th?
Yes, and I think we can extend that out to that, because I think your date was the 23rd.
23rd.
What was the 23rd?
We had to go back.
Oh, our, our homework deadline? Okay, because I had spoke, after that event, I spoke to a couple of people that couldn't make it, that have views of Redwood Avenue or, you know, a few other projects that they would like to see the city focus on. So, I've told them to come to City Hall and get that form.
Great.
All right, I think we can move along, turn the page. Department recommendations, anything, clerk? Finance? Good news? Got some money for them?
I wanted to talk to you tonight about Frank R. Howard Foundation. They're constructing a new medical office building adjacent to the hospital, and the new medical office building is going to house their rural health clinic and it's going to be operated by Adventist Health. They're going to do the majority of their building, and I don't know how much exactly in dollars, but with pre-tax bonds. They would receive a considerable, or substantially, I guess, less interest rate if the bonds are, go through the city. We wouldn't be responsible, my understanding from talking to Bill Statler and a little bit of research is that we wouldn't be responsible for the payment, the project, everything would fall back to the foundation, but they would benefit. The only thing that it would prevent us from is we wouldn't be able to issue bonds ourselves for more than four and a half million dollars, because they're asking us to issue five and a half million. I wasn't sure if this is something that council is interested in, even though we can do it, we're not obligated to do it, but I think it's worth considering because I do think it would be a great benefit for the city. So, my advice would be that we get bond counsel and ask the foundation to pay for our, our own bond counsel to see if it's financially viable.
Yeah, I think that that's a wise course. I think, I recommend that you continue to work on it and see if you can bring back a recommendation to the city.
Great, I will do that.
And I would be interested to know the timeframe, so that's one of the things I'd want to know if...
The timeframe is fairly, fairly urgent.
No, I mean, I mean, how long we would be prohibited from issuing our own bonds.
It would be through December, this calendar year, so if we, if we issued it in April, it would be through December 31st.
I can't imagine we'd be needing to issue millions of dollars of funds. Yes, I would certainly be interested in exploring it, yeah.
Okay, I will, I will do more research then, thank you.
Thank you. Legal, you're...
Our, the trial, the Brook Trail versus Willetts trial has been continued a couple of days. There's a trial in the Judge Dom's courtroom that has not concluded. We were told that Friday will be the first day, that'll be motions eliminated, and that Monday is a dark day, and so jury selection was, will likely start on Tuesday or Wednesday.
Mostly it's just a quick report on, I guess this is where the sad harp that I let you know that the passing of Larry Graff, he was a CalFire Fire Department officer who retired last year, he passed away. And there are going to be ceremonies, our services will be held for him at the Rec Road this Saturday at 2:00. We're going to be posting the area in front of the Rec Road for no parking the night before, so I'm kind of trying to put it out to the public, if folks cannot park in that area. CalFire, there will be a procession that'll happen before the services and they want a place to park a lot of the CalFire trucks that'll be driving up during the procession, so.
Public Works and Engineering. Let's do, let's do Humboldt Street first, Rod, and then we'll take on...
While Rod is coming up, I apologize, Jim, I meant to ask you ahead of time. I live on Pearl Street. What is the setback for...
500 feet for...
Okay, so I think I probably need to step down this way. I have a top...
I have a question on this, after sports, which I'm sure, but on the... Sorry, we're having, apologies. You think the Public Works are exempt?
Well, that's all right, if you want to step back.
All right. In the fiscal impact part of the summary report, it has, it says that the remainder after the portions that are charged to the sewer maintenance fund and the water fund are, is 875053, and I think that is not the right number because that was, it would be less than that after...
It would be 843303.
843303?
Yeah. Well, let's, you know, let's, let Rod, are you, are you on, on this agenda item or are you back on some other agenda?
No, I believe it's.
I think she's correct.
D1?
Total cost of the project, 890, including 15,000 for materials testing. So it'd be 875 minus the 27.5 for water maintenance, oh, excuse me.
It should be 890-053 minus, I think.
Okay, you're correct. Minus 27.5 minus 19,250, which.
843.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That does need to be corrected. 843.
303.
303. Thank you. So, just a quick overview of the project. See, now that we're going to employ the services of our GIS guy to give us a little more colorful drawings, the better presentation quality, I think. Essentially, we're paving from, essentially because we are, we're paving from Commercial Street to Valley. And from, for the entire section, we're going to grind two tenths, which is about two and a half inches, and use that as a leveling course, and then add three inches on top of that for a total thickness of 4500ths. Some of the highlights would be raised intersections at Men'sino and at Pearl Street. We're obviously ADA crossings and avoiding having to work around utility poles and other obstructions. We'll be replacing a lot of sidewalk, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we went through the project and looked at it and didn't think it would be a complete project without repairing some of the, for most, all of the damaged sidewalk for the entire section. And since we, since we lopped the project off and didn't continue up to Shake Street on Humboldt Street, we opted to add a portion of Van Lane and Schneider Lane out to Commercial Street because of the pretty bad condition.
Could you say that again?
So we chose, we chose to add, this is pretty late in our, in our process here, the section of East Van Lane from Humboldt Street to Main Street, and then Schneider Lane that runs by the.
Oh, okay.
The theater.
Between the theater and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And now we're going to just, we're going to grind 2500ths and just pave it back. No fabric, but since it's an alleyway, it'll be, it's a good opportunity for us to improve that, that area. So there's really nothing, nothing else paving and concrete other than we're going to replace a couple valves and a couple hydrants at Commercial Street. Might be three valves, three hydrants, I don't recall specifically. But you notice there's one valve out here that's, seems to be leaking worse on the northeast corner of Commercial and Humboldt. It's my understanding it's an old gas valve, water line, that we're going to replace. And that valve is actually back. So the hydrant is out here, the valve is back in the intersection. And the hydrant's, I don't know, it's 20 feet north on Humboldt, so.
So you're kind of waiting to do that north end of Humboldt until the fire department gets its project.
Right, right.
All straight away.
We didn't see any point in repairing the, you know, repairing the street.
They may have new curb cuts.
Driveway, et cetera, so.
Larry?
Wood Street, where it ties in, is that going to be, you're going to do, are you going to do Wood Street all the way through?
Um, Wood Street?
No, we're, it comes through the bank lot.
Right, we're not doing anything in the parking lot.
Okay, so you're just going to tie an apron into it, and that's it?
Where we have, Wood Street, yeah. So we, we need to put a ramp in here, that's quite a bit of work. This intersection needs quite a bit of work.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Trying correctly. So, looks like jury has to go in up to kind of a, I wouldn't say archer point, but so many feet back and we'll.
Okay, just an apron in there.
Smooth transition, yeah.
And the raised pedestrian crossing is on the south end of that, or the, on Pearl. Where Pearl, you know, comes into it, is just a little bit off of Wood Street. And I just wonder, are they going to tie in, I mean, is the sidewalk all going to tie in together? Or how's that going to work? Do you understand what I'm saying, essentially?
I think so. This, there will be, I would say, an accessible route crossing Pearl Street through Wood Street.
Okay, and then up. Then up Wood Street, where the sidewalk is alongside where the bank lot is?
You mean up into the, into the parking lot?
Yes.
We don't, we don't have anything going into the parking lot.
Okay, so all we have is just an apron?
Correct.
On some of these intersections, you have the little black shading on the four corners. I assume that's the ADA ramps?
There won't be ramps, they'll probably just be those.
Well, that's what I was asking. Like on Men'sino, the intersection of Men'sino, you're showing, I believe, a ramp, but there won't be ramps, will there?
No, those are the truncated domes. Because that's the raised intersection.
Yeah.
So those are just like Central Street and Oak Street. We have the raised crosswalk, raised intersection. On the corners, you still have the truncated domes. That's what those represent there.
Truncated dome?
Pearl Street, same thing, the yellow bumps.
Oh, okay.
So seen and paired, know that they're getting close to.
Right, okay, so you're going to have those, that represents the bumps that you have normally on an ADA ramp, but it won't be a ramp, it'll be straight into the raised intersection.
Correct, it'll be at grade, it'll be the same elevation.
Are we going to end up having to take up people's part of their front yard to give that, that offset?
The driveway around the back?
Yeah. Is that going to impede anybody's yard?
You know, I would have to talk to Jerry more about this. It looks like we have a couple that'll go into, into a couple yards. So I'll have to talk to him about, we discussed that with property owners.
Those are usually, one of the things that kind of.
They had a degree of difficulty. The other option, like in a couple instances, we just had to put in a rolled curve because there was no. The obstructions were not immovable, but it would have just been too much work to put that at driveway end.
What do you mean by rolled curve?
Just a rolled curve up onto the.
Oh, instead of, instead of a curb cut, you're.
Right, so we just put a little shorter rolled curve, so you drive over it.
Okay, I got you.
That's all they, that's all they have.
Yeah, yeah.
And when you plan to take this out to bid, if everything goes great?
As soon as possible. Today, they were preparing everything to go to the printer, and I don't have the schedule in front of me, but the idea is to start construction June 1st.
Okay, thank you. And how long will the, will the street, for people that live on the street, how long will it? I mean, this is a tough question, but these are the things that we all get when people get excited about not being able to go down this street, or not park, or whatever this is. I need some kind of an answer, it's going to be through by January 16, or, I mean, something that I can tell them.
Last I recall, we estimated it at a 90-day project. I think it was either 60 or 90 days, but it's going to be, the road work, as far as grinding everything, two tenths, rather than doing individual digouts, that makes it possible for us to just grind it out and leave it, and then come in and do the sidewalk curb and gutter. And that's really going to be something we have to discuss with the contractor, how we're going to, how we're going to stage that, or how we're going to schedule that the best to move through the project and get it done. I don't have a good answer for you yet, but I will, I will work on it.
This, this is something that, that all of us are going to get, and I'm certainly going to get it. So I just need to have some kind of an idea.
Thank you. Yeah.
On that same subject, when they, the grinding will be the whole, the whole set of blocks all at once, but it'll all still be, at the end of that day, or whenever, however many days that takes, it'll be accessible to everybody, but it just won't be paved, is that right? Until they come back?
Right, right. You still, like, I think they had, like in Lucerne, if you've driven Highway 20, they had, they grinded that and left it for, it might still be that way.
Just south of Hopland right now, there's a.
That big.
A mile or so.
And then the stage, the other work, so let people know when their area.
Yeah, and we'll do the same thing we did on Phase One, and that's weekly updates, letting everybody know, talking to everybody as much as possible to let them know what's coming up the next week.
There's really not a lot of residences actually on the street. It's a feeder street for Pearl and some, but, I mean, there's eight, six or eight residents in that three-block area. It's not, it's not like some residential areas where they're just, one, one right after another.
One of the, the big challenges is Wood Street, because another Caltrans or CHP want traffic to go back out.
Right.
Out onto Main Street at Wood Street, so.
Oh.
We, we have to figure out, it's just, they can go through the, the drive-through parking.
Right.
Kind of, you know, that's one, so we close that down, and they can use that as an access, or. It says one way, but people still go in.
I never.
Do you want a motion on this?
Well, no, I mean. I'd, if we've done asking questions up here for now? Anybody in the public like to address the Humboldt Street project?
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
The raised, the raised intersections break and to see, and are they going to be raised enough that don't have a dampening of the traffic going down this street?
My quick, my answer would be yes. I would assume that not only the raised intersection, but the striking provides, provides a visual cue for people to slow down, so I would think that they would be traffic calming, because that's partially what they're, partly what they're intended to do.
A lot of that has to do with how high they are. The ones on Commercial Street are pretty good, they slow people down at 25 miles an hour. If the ones on the other street, we just got to go a little higher, so I just thought it was possible to slow the traffic down.
I always take a ride down Central Street, you'll see exactly what that's like. They have that raised intersection. It's not like what's on West Commercial Street. It's less of a, so I think if you take a ride down Central, you'll get a feel of what the raised intersection is. I'll bet you won't even notice it.
This is really exciting, I mean, I'm looking at this and thinking, wow, this is great. This is what I'm looking to do. There are probably more businesses than there are residents on that street.
Right.
And I see an absence of planners, like, shit, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
There's some there, one, two, three, six, seven.
There's not, there's not very much room on this.
No, I'm kidding, that's the only reason I'm doing that.
Flower pot, we're not planners, just a flower pot out there. Okay, anybody else from the, you want to make a comment as a member of the public?
Yeah. Two things. I had a business owner that fronts the lane, wondering if it's possible to do stamped, to do some stamped impression on that pavement. Oh, my God!
You get a feature, kid.
Sorry.
It's 10 bucks.
And then secondly, my spouse is wanting to weigh in and say that he prefers the raised intersection like Central, not Commercial. He said he liked, he really likes the raised intersection, but he likes that one. But he, that's a resident preference.
All right, thank you. Bring it back up here and look for a motion.
Still move?
Sex.
Movement staff's recommendation? I manage at it with the way the.
Oh, well, whatever.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the plans and specifications for Humboldt Street and Vicinity Rehab Project Phase Two, and authorize an advertisement for bids, is that correct for the maker of the motion? Yes, it is. Roll call, vote please.
Yes, it's John.
Yes.
Yes. Wayne Steen?
Yes.
Yes. And this is a half-cent sales tax funded project.
Yes.
Okay, now, I get back up to full fighting force here. And we will take on the possibility of adopting a, I've got it right here. Unless this is something different. Adopting the resolution, accepting the construction completion of the Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project Contract 2012-02, and authorize the filing of the Notice of Completion. Rod, do you have any more to say about this? All of the bits and pieces have been picked up and put together and online.
Everything seems to be working and in place.
Scott gave it as a stamp of approval?
Yeah, I think there's some kinks we have to work out, but everything's functional. And it's, everything seems to be working pretty, really well, well, really well, I would say. The new clarifier has added, added, added a lot to the system, and clarifier comes on. Looks pretty nice, so.
Does somebody care to make a motion up here?
I'm ready.
Second.
Madge and Larry, any public comment on this project? An important project, is a major, a major improvement for the city that has been done in the last couple of years. They had some grant funding and some very, very attractive finance funding, and is being paid, taking on this debt as we are retiring a debt of a similar, of a similar amount. So it is a complete rate impact to do this project. Not that we're run out of things to do in the drinking water side of our business, but this was an important improvement that seemed to go smoothly from, I'm sure it did for the people that were working there today, but from the amount of toil that we had to deal with up here, it seemed to go, seemed to go well. So thank you for, to the crew for putting that project together. And the community will benefit unbeknownly, but they will benefit.
I just, I, I think I assumed that J.C. and/or Tom would be here. I didn't have a chance to even talk to either one of them for very long today, but I was hoping they would be here to talk about it, since, since they were here when it started.
To give, pat him on the back.
Right, I'll let them know.
Yeah, please let them know.
All the credit goes to those guys.
Any other comments on this project?
No, sorry.
Let's do a roll.
Yes.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilor Stransky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Wayne Steen?
Uh, yeah.
Mayor Parkin?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Anything else in water and wastewater systems?
Public Works Crew got the valve in at the base of Centennial Dam last week. And last Friday, we put the splashboards in, we got approval to put them in early.
Now, if it'll just rain.
And we need, we do need rain. It's not coming up as fast as everybody had hoped, Centennial, that is. And since we quit spilling over in Morris, we, we delayed the flushing program for, for a few days to. the, uh, the flushing program for, for a few days to, to consider our options, so we have to, have some more discussion over, um, whether or not that we need to move forward, so it's just, there's, there were other things that set it back a couple of days, just like, uh, the Main Street water line was supposed to start on Monday, now we're looking to start that next Monday because of, uh, we needed, um, concurrence from, I'm sure, well, that's not the only thing, we had some other things we needed to finish up, the plumbing at the groundwater treatment plant, so we could get the building, building up was, was pretty important, so, um, anyway, we're getting the ton of the, the signs charged up and ready to, for, um, traffic control out on Main Street, so, um, I'm sure there's a lot more, but those are the highlights.
My question was.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Dave, Brian.
She's got to do it.
Uh, let's see. So we can move on to council and committee reports, MCOG.
MCOG, not MCOG, it didn't, it, uh, we, what we did is, um, accepted the proposal and of the unfunded transit needs, and, um, that was essentially all of it.
Okay.
That's a MCOG question?
Yeah, sure.
Um, Adrian, earlier, I'm not sure who knows this, but that, the alley grant that's been applied for, is that ATP funding or something like that, does that ring a bell?
No, that's the.
Not officially.
MCOG's overall work program, and, um.
Someone asked me for an update on an ATP budget.
That's the Altrans grant application that we sent, submitted for Main Street.
Okay.
That's the one that we're expecting to hear any time.
Yeah, if not official yet, so.
Okay. Here's Chris.
Uh, LAFCO?
Uh, LAFCO met, and we interviewed two candidates for the public, um, member, sorry, alternate public member, and, um, voted to welcome Carol Rosenberg, I believe is her name, to the LAFCO board as an, as the alternate public. I believe Jerry Ward is the current public. Also, we reviewed the first handful of fire district MSRs, including Little Lake Fire, Leightonville, Covelo, and a number of others. There's still six or seven other ones to do, and so that will be ongoing.
Okay. Uh, MTA?
MTA met, um, just about two weeks ago here in Willets, and it was a short meeting, and nothing very notable happened. There are some new members.
Who's the executive director of that now? Bruce Richards retired, right?
Dan Baxter.
Yes, Dan Baxter.
Dan Baxter, he, he's worked there for a very long time.
Uh, ENSW.
ENSW meets next week, and I'm sure Mike is very sad to hear that I won't be able to make the meeting, I'll be out of town.
Hi, Adrian Baxter.
EDFC.
Seriously?
EDFC will be meeting tomorrow in Fort Bragg, and, um.
Thank you.
I'm hoping not to go, because I have a lot on my plate.
You don't have to, it's optional.
But, yeah, but they, we're short of a quorum, so anyway, yeah, they're on meeting tomorrow.
Lee, anything, we've got.
Uh, just that, that, uh, meeting coming up, and other members are welcome to go, I mean, I, I find those pretty useful, it's a good networking event.
Water and wastewater, do we, I don't think we have anything to do to report the rebate, Ed. Finance Committee, we, uh, we did meet.
Mid-year.
Mid-year budget deal.
Got that workshop, basically in place of, of regular finance committee.
Right. Uh, ad hoc committees, Caltrans bypass has not met, the solid waste.
We're gonna talk about.
We're gonna talk about that under council member reports. Solar Ray project.
We're, we're still moving forward on that thing, um, so I have nothing to report on that specifically, but, uh, related to that, I got an email from Dan Hamburg today, informing me, I, I believe Adrian had also received this, that there, the county's looking into a, um, California Clean Power and Sonoma Clean Power, um, organizations to maybe put together some kind of a countywide power control option, and basically, they wanted to know if, um, we would be interested in participating in this. He, he was aiming at the solar ad hoc committee because it's, you know, power-related, but I, I don't know, uh, how like that would be done, but I just thought I'd mention that and see if there's any interest, um, in participating in the, um, the project.
Is this something like a Sonoma Clean Power moving?
It's something like that, that seems to be the, um.
I'd be interested, sorry, Madge's first.
Um, so, yeah, I, I don't know much about it yet, but I believe a representative is trying to work out a schedule to come up to Willets at some point relatively soon, and anyone who's interested, although we can't do, have three members of the council present, but I, I would like to learn more about it, but I definitely am interested in, um, looking at any opportunities that help both our citizens and our city save money and save, um, you know, non-renewable resources.
Yeah, they're, they're reaching out to all the cities in Menzino County, as well as their city managers, you know, they wanna get interest, um, see where it goes.
Yes, so maybe we could have, um, an ad hoc, our, our ad hoc members and our.
Well, let's, let's, let's hang in and see what, somebody comes and makes a presentation.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd be happy to have someone here, if, if not, a public forum, then.
So should I reply to him, or how, how do you feel, do you wanna talk about this at some later time, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, to both?
Well, I, yeah.
Yeah, later time.
See if they're, if they're really serious, they'll call back.
Okay.
Test their sincerity.
Okay.
Um, sorry, Main Street improvements, we've covered that this evening, Center for the Arts.
Uh, we haven't had any further ad hoc committee meetings as of yet, but, uh, at the last one, Alyssa Ware, I think I reported the last meeting, she had provided a lot of good information, and, and then later sent me, um, a grant application for a grant that's due next month, that would actually provide funding for strategic planning, and so, um, I, I'm trying to see if there's somebody in the community that could help put a grant application together. It's not really a, uh, it's not as comprehensive as, like, the Main Street one, so, you know, I can probably count it out myself in, in afternoon, but I think it would be good to submit that and just see where, where that goes.
Missing any other committee reports?
We would form some more.
Yeah. Let's, uh, so now we, under council member reports and recommendations, it's, and I think we're gonna probably not take this, this, the item is a discussion of possible direction or action regarding the franchise agreement with Solid Waste at Willets, but their staff is telling me that they're inclined to pull this this evening.
Yeah, they, the intention was to have an agenda item before you, you know, as part of the agenda packet, to discuss the terms that the ad hoc committee has come up with, um, and get council consensus on those terms, so we could go back to Jerry Ward and say, this is what, this is what we want. Um, we're not quite there yet, um, there's still some terms that haven't quite been, uh.
But the two ad hoc members are not totally.
Not quite yet.
They haven't quite finished their negotiations.
We're, we're building the cage right now for the cage fight.
Okay. I'm sure you guys can work it out.
Yeah.
I, I did wanna mention, though, just to kinda throw it out there, um, you know, the contract, there's a lot of components of it that, uh, are being discussed in this process, but I think that the three biggest ones have to do with adding a new program for food waste and mixed organics diversion to a permitted facility, and this is in part being compelled for, because of some legislation that's coming our way. And on that note, I had, um, our annual check-in meeting with CalRecycle that Mike Sweeney participated in last week, I think it was, and, um, I think it went well. Um, you know, we have made some improvements, um, we need to make more, but, um, at least we didn't, you know, stay stagnant. Um, we are looking at, um, you know, potentially a, a freeze of service rates for X number of, you know, a certain period of time, and, um, also looking at, um, the potential of increasing the franchise fee with no pass-through to the rate payers that could potentially serve as a mechanism, um, for revenue to support street maintenance. Um, so those seem to be the three areas that I think would be of most interest to the public, um, and we're fine-tuning those, and we'll bring this back in the form that we intended to have this meeting at the next council meeting on the 25th. Um, we also, um, are reviewing, separate from negotiation, from the negotiations process, reviewing the records regarding a fifteen percent increase, every year there's an annual, um, increase that takes place for, um, CPI, Consumer Price Index. A couple of times, there's been a, a bit larger of an increase, and there was one such larger increase in 2006, um, it was fifteen percent, and we're looking back in the records to get a better grasp on why that was, what the parameters were, um, the, the records are a bit lacking, um, so, um, Mike Sweeney was the one that brought that to our attention, and, um, we have questions about that, of course, and have talked to Jerry about that, Jerry Ward. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that's really being looked at by the ad hoc committee, but separately from this negotiations process.
And the, and the issue around that is whether it was meant to be a one-year increase or, or an increase in perpetuity.
Right, there, there are some letters, um, that made this request from Solid Waste, and, um, there's only one reference, and it's not in those letters between Jerry and Ross Walker, um, but it is in the minutes where it was intended to be, apparently for a twelve-month period.
So, trying to get to the bottom of that.
Yes.
Good.
Can, can we, um, discuss it all and get a little bit of feedback, because I think in, um, the next two weeks, we could be productively, um, talking with Jerry Ward about contract terms, and I, I would love to make sure that we have support from the council for moving towards a mixed organics as well as food waste diversion, uh, as one, one aspect, um, to getting weekly pickup of the bins, which I think is very important with the mixed waste and, and food waste being put into bins other than the garbage bins, and if you have feelings about increasing the franchise tax, um, fee from the current twelve percent to potentially fifteen percent, provided that there was no pass-through of that increase to the rate payers, that's something that, that we have, we have been banding about, and I, I really feel like it would be very helpful to know where the council stands on some of those things.
Well, I'll, I'll jump in, if you like. I, I want our agreement to be, uh, consistent with state law, you know, I want us to be in compliance, uh, but I wanna do it at the, at the least impact to the rate payer, and if, if the hauler is offering something to do, something for no additional fee, then I'm more interested in that than one that has an additional fee to it. I, I, you know, my, my sense on that issue is, is that this community has a lot of, of composting and it's food waste in the residential level that, 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 that isn't going to create a marked reduction in our, in our waste load to have that in there, because I think they're gonna use it on-site anyway, but that's, I don't have anything to back that up, um, just my comment, but, and having, I lived here for a long time and stuff, but, so, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I just, resistant to having weekly pickup of yard waste, I mean, that's, that, that is clearly a doubling of the cost of something. It's, it is, they do it every two weeks, and they only do it once a week, so there's, that would appear to me to be an argument to double some component of his bill, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not, at this point, that doesn't, doesn't ring my bell very well. Yes, my thoughts right for a moment.
I'm gonna put the Larry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just gonna say, um, that I'm in support of the green waste, I think that that's the direction we have to go, and I'm certainly, yeah, the mixed organics, um, to a permitted facility, I like not specifying, because I, I think that that's kind of not, I don't think we're in the position to require one, a place or not, um, and I'm a resident that currently composts, but not very well, and I would gladly switch over to, to including it in my yard waste if, if it was available, and I've, I've spoken to a number of other people, and I think it's the direction that, um, municipalities are, are gonna be going, so I think that it sort of puts us in the, you know, in the, I think it puts us going in the right direction. Obviously, I would prefer to do that without an increase, but I, I think that that is gonna have to be put forward as far as, you know, negotiating.
Larry? Um, I'm definitely for having the waste go to a, someplace like, including maybe the Cold Creek or wherever it is, uh, facility, I'm not specifying that that's exactly where it has to go, but sim, but it has the same facilities to, to do it. The one thing else that I'm concerned is, uh, when it goes in the waste can, I don't feel that we ought to have it in some kind of container or something, I mean, I don't really understand how that's gonna work, but we need to work on that to see, I mean, am I just gonna put each day, am I gonna just put my waste in the green barrels along with the leaves and all of that other stuff? And then there's a time period in the, in the, uh, period after the leaves drop off, let's say, in, in the middle of winter and stuff, where I don't have a lot of waste in my green barrels, and so what's gonna happen at that particular time? Um, and, you know, I don't really know whether the waste hauler needs to pick it up each week either, I mean, um, maybe, well, I just don't know, I just need more information on that, um, and, uh, definitely like everybody else, I, I would like it without any kind of increase in, in money.
So that gives you, that gives you the three council members, and you two know what you like, so I think we've covered.
And I do not like having separate bags. That was.
I just, one comment about the volume involved is, I think a lot of the restaurants and other food, um, commercial establishments have bigger volume and don't compost now, so I think it is very significant, particularly for those kinds of users, and also for apartment dwellers, so it'll add up, even if all of the single-family home people have their own little compost, it, it would still be a very significant, um, factor to, to be able to handle those kinds of volumes of waste.
Does that give you any help?
Well, I have to tell you that, um, you know, tonight, we were going to go into a little more detail, some of the questions that some of you raised, we were going to cover it, but since we didn't get it together, I, I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to say that we got direction, because we didn't have a full discussion where you represented all the facts and all the ramifications of all the choices. Um, if we're going to do this in two weeks, I guess.
Well, we are, and, I mean, we were just responding to Madge's.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna be gone next week, so we couldn't have a meeting next week anyway, uh, it would just be the week of the next council meeting, actually, so.
You're working on it.
I've got a.
Mike, excuse me. Mike, did you, would, do you care to add anything that you thought? Okay, thank you. We have the county expert here, and I didn't wanna, if you had, thank you.
I've got a, I have a couple other council member reports.
Uh, okay.
Um, I got a email that was, I get this public CEO thing, and this has to do with plastic bags. Speaking, speaking of Mike. Speaking of Mike, basically saying that the California voters are left holding the bag on the plastic bag ban, that the state had tried to enact a plastic bag ban, but that was short-lived. This was SB 270, making California the first state, state to ban plastic bags. But it was, uh, short-lived, because it was overturned by the plastic bag lobby that is saying that it needs to be decided by the voters. So, it says now that SB 270 is on hold and subject to voter approval, expect an all-out war come November 2016. The plastic bag industry has and will continue to spend enormous amounts of money in an effort to stop the ban on plastic bags. By some media estimates, the plastic bag industry, well, it, it goes on. But since we had at one point looked into that, that saga continues.
Do you have another?
I do, I have other public council member reports.
Well, this would be in time.
I was able to meet with Senator Mike McGuire's representative, Carrie Linddecker, and we were able to get a tour of the bypass route with Tom Gunther. I hadn't been out there in a while, and it, it was good to take our senator's representative so that she can sort of get the lay of the land, because she's somewhat new to the area. Also, I was able to speak with Mike McGuire on Sunday, and he said that he's put in a million dollars for Mendocino County water projects into the Prop 1 funding. So, I said, are you sure? And he said, we're, he's getting it done, so, so hopefully that will continue to come our way.
Hold it?
No. He said a million dollars, Willets, the Ukiah, they're doing a water reclamation project, and a, something to do with Coyote Dam, those three.
So, a million dollars total for all three?
Yeah.
Or because when I was contacted for a list, I was asked to generate a list of projects that were a million dollars or less in cost, and we submitted four.
Right.
Four items.
I couldn't, you know, this was like a reception, a conversation, so I tried to get a commitment. Also, there is a mayor, a mayor's and council members conference in June, and I'm interested in attending. And I had contacted Adrian, because I didn't quite know what the process was for that, because it is a unbudgeted event. But that's something that I was interested in participating in. Some of the more interesting topics that are going to be covered, and I found these to be really useful, is the.
Is this a lead deal?
It's a lead deal. Is the enhanced infrastructure financing districts. This is, in the post redevelopment world, ways in which people can fund infrastructure. That was just one of the topics that they're going to be covering, and I think could be valuable.
Well, we'll talk about it at the budget process, see if you end up with any travel money.
Okay.
Wouldn't hold my breath.
But I might need to know prior, prior to June.
You're welcome to go.
Or I know the registration is what, until May, I think May.
Do we have any other council reports or recommendations? Any good in welfare?
Yeah, I had a chance to go to Women's History Month celebration down in Ukiah, and they.
Seem to be the only one that does anything around here.
I, this is, as far as I figure, the council member reports is our chance to let the public know what's going on. And the good in welfare is to let people know what good stuff is going on. And they, they had Fiona Ma, our State Board of Equalization person, was the keynote speaker, and she did a pretty great job. But it was a really neat event to honor the women who did the store net of public lands, who are, who are the main drivers behind that. Jean Neer, who's a rancher in Potter Valley, Victoria Patterson, who does, she's an archaeologist in native language historian. And there was one other woman from, from Redwood Valley. It's just, it's a neat event that they put on every year at the Saturday Afternoon Club, and I was glad to attend.
Any other good in welfare?
I do.
Okay.
So, on Sunday, we had a forum on the issues of using herbicides in the valley. And there were a lot of very interesting speakers, including Native American and workers who spray the stuff, and physiology of what happens when herbicides get ingested in human beings and plants and other things too. Anyway, it's very interesting, and Tom Woodhouse was present, and at one point, somebody asked what his position was, and he got up and said he did not like the idea of having herbicides used in our valley. This is regarding the Caltrans mitigation lands. So, that was very interesting, and I actually hope that the county board of supervisors will take that issue up, and perhaps the city council will be interested in taking a position on that as well. The other good in welfare is that on, I announced it last time, two weeks ago, but on March 22nd, which is a week from this Sunday, there will be, John Curry of Economic Development Finance Corporation will be speaking at 4 o'clock on that Sunday, the 22nd, at the Grange about local social impact investing, which is basically investing in businesses that create jobs and that are sustainable in our economy, and really trying to stimulate enterprises in our region. So, I think that'll be very interesting, both for people interested in investing and also people willing and, and interested in getting loans to create enterprises. I know at least one of the, one of the ventures that he will touch on is the meatpacking proposal. And biochar is also another aspect, and wool processing. So, there's a lot of economic opportunities that could be stimulated by such a program.
Thank you. Oh, all right.
Yeah, the Saturday, the museum put on the, the road show.
Oh, yeah.
And this is the second year they did it, and the second year I saw it. And I think it was, it was better than last year, it was really kind of cool. I mean, I really enjoyed the, the authenticity. They were reading from letters written by the settlers and the people who were here in the 1800s. And it was some pretty poignant stuff. I mean, one of them, one of the things was talking about the coats and frost.
Fueled.
Yeah.
Genified.
What's the word?
Fueled, genified, whatever you want to call it.
And how it came, it came about as a result of the Civil War. I mean, I, I never realized that California had a lot of north and south sensibilities here. And there was a story they told about a young child, a baby, 18 months old, I believe, who got burned in the fire. And, and the local doctors did a skin graft. And the whole, there was this letter read about this whole process, talking about the high school kids who came forward to volunteer their skin, and, and how long it took, and we're talking in the 1800s. It was just so real, I mean, God, you sit at the edge of your seat and listen to these stories about the early settlers here. It, it was amazing.
There was a, a lady that lived in Willets in the 70s and up through the 90s that wrote for the Willets News, Ringa Lynn, that did a wonderful series of oral interviews of, you know, at that point, people that went back to, that lived up, you know, were born in the 1880s. So, it, it was probably a little generation beyond that. But, but there's a, a great, she did that for years, she periodically do stories.
Would that be available to see?
Well, there, I'm sure there are part of archives of the Willets.
At the library.
At the library?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll take a look at that.
But they're on microfiche, so you have to find. Actually, there's, you push the button.
Okay.
But she did, she did that for a long, long time.
It reminded me that I, I guess I wasn't formally appointed to the museum board, but, but they think I was, so they invited me.
Yeah.
That's how.
And I went to their meeting this week, and so if you want me to continue to do that, please. They were excited to have a Willets representative.
I think that's great.
And we need to send the letter to the county.
Okay, we will move to our final act of the evening. The eve of the beginning of the end, I hope, of this issue, the conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation of Willets versus Brook Charles versus Willets. Any decisions made out of that, we will report in this room shortly thereafter.